Evening, everybody. That's so quiet in here.
It is.
Kind of eerie. Well, welcome to our October 26th work session preparation for our November board meeting. Bramlett, you'll have the indication pledge next week. We'll approve the minutes. We'll approve the agenda, go over some committee reports. Superintendent may or may not have some recognition. We might have some visitors and requests appear before the board. Dr. Green, you're going to start off tonight, of course?
I will, just to let you know that the communications report for September is there for your review. And unless you have questions, that's the report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions about this report? Ms. Houston?
All right, thank you. Good evening. Tonight I have the invoices paid between $10,000 and $24,999. The first one is to NTPG Sports Medicine and that was a general fund for $10,000. And for our 2021-2022 North Georgia Physicians Group Athletic Training Services. And that serves Barrow River High School, Atlaugie High School, and Bassa. Our, the next one's cooperative purchases. It's for school food nutrition, $23,760, and we got $216,000 of them. And that is District Y. The next one is Douglas Equipment out of school food nutrition plans, $15,066 of the defense. It was for a steamer, and that was for Holson Bay. Electric, electro mesh, mesh school scoreboards was paid out of slot plans for $12,778. And that was for the Barrow Creek Middle School scoreboard replacement and installation. All its whole solutions out of the general fund, about $774.99 for Callan Destiny Library License. Licensing District Renewal, that's District Y. ZOMs LLC is for ITS instructors paid out of the general fund. $11,675 for district licensing for Adobe, and that's 2,500 licenses, District Y. Cornell Education paid out of our AR from Care's Fund for $24,000. And that's for 60e Cornell Course Involvement, and this is for professional learning, District Y. The last one is TRA E, and it was paid out of general fund for $10,053. And it was school-based financial accounting software, and that is District Y also. Any questions?
Ms. Houston?
Yes?
Those $216,000 supply chain trades, how long will that last until they're gone?
And we really can't fund anymore. So we're going to be transitioning back to our harder trades. And those will go to have these boats and wash them, everything. And try and get a whole bit more of the harder trades that we can put through the dishwasher. And those are backward too. But we do have a plan, and we do have enough to feed the students. It'll just have to be washing them quicker, getting a little bit better time for our school nutrition staff.
So it's basically still a supply chain issue?
Definitely a supply chain issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Yep.
Good evening. Just want to give a little update on a couple of our projects. Our new elementary school, which is also great operations facility beyond that as well. The Austin Road, well underway with airport operations there. Strong storm, pipe. And also we've got the tank wall, water tank wall underway on site there. So making good progress. Simon, you bring us here in October, but so far. Our transportation job. Been running along there as well. Got the window frames in. And we got HVAC units. And we should begin putting sheepback up this week. So there again, the real progress out here.
On time and under budget? Good deal.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mowen?
The teaching report consists of an update on the plan to implement the new Georgia, the new Math standards, K-12 Math standards for the state of Georgia. And we are fortunate to have Mrs. Tamara Holden with us for a report. She's our K-8 Math specialist, and she will be followed by Mrs. Casey Maddis, who is the 912 Director of Math Facts at the Northeast Georgia List. Mrs. Holden?
Good evening. We are going to go through the updated implementation timeline for the new Math standards. We're going to discuss some recent guidance from the state along with the standards that it applies to computation strategies primarily at the elementary level. And then assess the timeline for adopting some curriculum resources for K-5. All right, so this is a new implementation timeline. Originally, this was going to be our training year 2021, 2022. And we were going to implement in 2022, 2023. But recently, the state decided that that implementation timeline was a little too fast. And so now we will actually implement the new standards the following year, 2023, 24, which gives us this year and next year for training our teachers and making sure that they are on board with the new standards, they understand them, and that they have time to do all some resources for the new standards. One of the, one of the lines in the implementation document, I'm having trouble reading it, but I can tell you that it says that you, I made myself copy, that's fine. The new implemented, the new K-12 standards heavily emphasize flexibility with the use of mathematical strategies and methods. Basically, in our current Math standards, it's laid out very clearly where the year, this whole year, that students are to learn the traditional US algorithm for different computations. So for example, students learn the traditional addition algorithm in fourth grade and the US traditional subtraction algorithm in fourth grade. You may think of that as like, you know, like we wanted to stack them and add them up or stack them and, you know, subtract. With the new standards, there's flexibility. Teachers get to decide when the students are ready for those algorithms. We know that some students are ready for the addition algorithm before fourth grade, and some students need, need all of that time, and they, they're not really ready. But until fourth grade. But what we want to make sure that we communicate to our teachers, and we're going to do this, we're, we don't want to lose the, the good teaching that is happening right now with math as far as teaching students strategy based on place. That will be teaching them how to compose and decompose numbers, teaching them how to do mental math, and really just a general teaching them how to be flexible thinkers. So we don't want our teachers saying, here you go, just stack them and add them. We want them to understand the strategies that we have been teaching them that are ready, that the strategies are, that are making the proper math. So we're going to make sure that that's communicated to, to our teachers. One of the things that we know happens sometimes is a parent shows the student the way to do it, the specific way the teacher has shown the student, and lots of times the message is, no, 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 we don't do it that way. You'll learn that later. But what we're going to kind of change that message to, instead of saying, no, 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 we'll learn that later, we're going to change that to, hey, let's look at that, and let's talk about point that works and connect it back to the conceptual understanding that we're trying to help our students develop. And there is a, let's see, what slide are we on? We go on to the next one. There's a, there are guidance documents. This is, this slide is a step from one of the pages in the standards, kind of showing teachers the different strategies that we will emphasize. And the US traditional algorithm is one of those strategies for addition, fractional patient addition. But we'll be doing professional learning with our teachers and make sure they understand that we will still teach the conceptual strategies in addition to the US traditional algorithm. All right, so instructional support, we are. So for the elementary level, I will be working with the instructional coaches to develop our PL sessions for our elementary teachers. And then the instructional coaches at each elementary school will deliver that professional learning, and I will assist them as needed. But there are nine elementary schools and six grades in each of those schools. So it's kind of difficult for me to go to every single school and build that need. But there are lots of benefits that having our instructional coaches really dig into the standards and do the work first, because they're supporting the teachers, they are on the ground in the schools. So they need to be really the motors to be with that standard to be able to speak to the changes from the current standards to the incoming standards. On the, let's talk about middle school. With middle school, I already meet with each middle school team once a month because we're only talking about four schools. So it's easier for me to get around to do that. And we are actually, we've already started knowing the new standards. We focus on one big idea or one domain each month that I meet with them. We talk about, you know, what has changed from the current standards to the new standards, what is changing. And then we discuss how those changes are going to align with Open Up, which is our Math Curriculum. And the next slide, I just said Open Up, the Math Curriculum in middle school. We don't have a Math Curriculum in elementary school. And so you can see on the timeline that that's something that we're going to work with. We're going to work on prior to COVID. We actually had a plan and a timeline for adopting Math, a Math Curriculum for K-5. But then COVID. And so we've had to adjust our timeline, but it really works out anyways. It was getting the new Math standards. We're going to need to really understand those standards before we adopt a Math Curriculum as it needs to align with our new standards. We are going to go through an adoption process where instructional coaches, all principals are involved, administrators, and teachers are involved in the adoption process. So our, our goal is to have a Math, a Math Curriculum to implement a Math Curriculum in 2024, 2025. It sounds a long way down the road, and it kind of is. But we have to get the new standards in place and kind of let the, you know, the different companies that sell curriculum, how to let them catch up with the new standards and make sure that we get a curriculum that actually matches what's needed. And I was going to go along through, and one more thing in my presentation, and it's about the accelerated program in middle school and high school. But Casey Maddis also had that in her presentation, so we don't want to double up on that. So she's going to present that part. Do you have any questions about what I presented?
I did have a question. I like the fact that you said that, that the teachers get to decide when the students move on to the different things. But you said that the state, in the first part with the elementary curriculum, decided that that timeline, that we weren't able to do it. Why do we let the state make that decision if, if our teachers are ready to move on like we, our students are? Why don't we face that if our, in Barrow County, if our teachers are ready to move on and they get it, why don't we go on and implement it if we're ahead of schedule?
Well, our current standards, the ones that we are, the GSE that we're teaching from right now, it very clearly dictates when teachers are supposed to teach that. Now, we do give our teachers some flexibility, but as if they're working with students who are ahead, then we allow them to use the Math Continuum or the Math Assessment. And sometimes they go ahead and teach the US standard algorithm before they're technically what it was supposed to be based on our current standards. But the new standards give us that flexibility in elementary school. Where the current standards, you know, it's just really outriding it. And we, we don't always follow that because we do allow teachers to use that Math Continuum and address students where they are. But it's nice that the new standards give us that flexibility, and we don't have to go like, you know, going outside.
So in other words, if our teachers are ready to move on with it, they can. Okay.
And actually, in this guidance document, it, it says that that statement that I read to you about the current K-12, I should turn this off. It's all, plus the current K-12 standards, it talks about that flexibility piece with the algorithms. And it says that we should not wait until 2023, 24 to allow our teachers that flexibility. And that's what we're going to be communicating to our teachers. We're actually sharing with the UBS, but we've been official communication to our, to our teacher that the elementary middle school.
I have a question. When you say we're going to continue to teach composing and decomposing math, you're basically talking Common Core standards are still going to be taught?
No, ma'am. I, well, I don't think of composing and decomposing as being Common Core. Composing and decomposing is something that we've done since I was in school. I don't know that we use the terms composing and decomposing, but if I think of the number 24, that's two kids at four months, that's the composing number.
Okay.
Just, it's basically that that's placed out in understanding that all students need.
Thank you. I was thinking we were going to have teachers using both systems, and that's found hard to do. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Flav, report. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Casey Maddis. I work at District Arista. I have been director of basketball at there for 16 years now, and I taught middle and high school around for 26 years, retired to that. So lots of experience in, in standard changes and in teaching a variety of students. So it's always a privilege to work with your leadership and your teachers as well. And I currently am able to do that in their high schools. In fact, I'll be back tomorrow. I thought that was, I drove the mountains, I should have got my tone. And just said, you know, maybe I can't find the product. But thank you for letting me bring some information to you. I'm also titled Math Mentor in the state. And so we have numbers of them around state through the Aristas. And we work very closely with the Department of Ed. And the Math team there is really very visionary, but very practical, I must say. And so one of the things that I, that's on this slide here and this slide is this idea that we have really been married to for some time in the state of Georgia. But with this new revision of standards, we had the opportunity to really make it larger in that front. For, if you look at the study about how American education's come out from the 1600s fore, we have like 50, 70 years conceptual understanding, 57 years, 50 to 70 years procedural fluency. And that's gone back and forth across all time here in the US and actually in the world. But what we, we know by the research and by what's good for students, by having taught for so long and your teaching, is that there's a sweet spot where we balance conceptual understanding and procedural fluency, really bringing to bear contextual learning and application, even at the high school level. And I, I shouldn't say even at the high school level. I remember in my Teaching Officer Two location, I was working with a math professor from the University of Georgia, and I asked him for an application upon a new function. And he said, when you find one, let me know. And so I was thinking, well, gee, you're not being very helpful. But then I've actually shared with him some applications of that system. And that's the idea that we're not just studying that math to be theoretical or theoretical. It's useful for every day life. And so this really helps us focus on this idea that we are not trying to make everybody into a mathematician, we're trying to help everybody become a mathematical thinker. Math is doable, and actually, I think that's a lot of fun. And we can do some great things, and everybody can achieve at high levels. And so, God, that, that's what we're marrying ourselves to happen for some time. But with this revision of standards, we have the opportunity to make that margin better by. A couple of other things that will happen. We're, this year, the only thing that we have right now, the only thing, are the standards for every grade and every course. We don't have the curriculum maps, the comprehensive grade level course views, the interactive instructional units, the variability supports, and the instructional videos yet. But all of that's to be published on July 1st. And so we have teams working on that right now. I'm shooting videos already myself to help with statistics. And so a number of people around state are doing that. That will allow me to publish tests. So right now, all that teams and teachers can do is look at the standards. But right now, they're current, they're teaching the standards they currently have, and their VOGs, their integrated grade tests and course tests will be reflective of the standards that are in place right now. So we don't want them to be overwhelmed by what's to come. But we do need to start dipping our toes in that, and your leadership's doing a great job of doing that. So let's go ahead and look at the math, the high school mathematics story and what's coming for us. Currently, and we stop for our therapist, currently we have two algebra courses around the state that you can choose from, Algebra I or, or Algebra. We have two geometry courses. And then by the end of the 10th grade, you see all those same standards, no matter which courses your district chooses to put in place. And then everybody moves on into Algebra II and then beyond that. When we go into the new standards, we'll have just one algebra course, just one geometry course, and then they'll move into advanced algebra, and then move on into fourth course options. And this is really not readable at all. I hope you can see an up close version of it. But that's our current pathway. And you'll notice the very large level that's there are all of the fourth course options that are available to high schools to teach around the state. Now, no high school can offer all of that. But, but you have to determine what is best for your students and your population and their future needs. And that's a big test for a high school to take on. But you can't possibly do all of that. But all of those fourth course options are accepted by the University System of Georgia for admission, you know, college or university in Georgia. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily for a private institution. I need to say that parenthetically, because somebody kind of talked to me about that as well. But, but for all of those that get you into like college or university in Georgia. Now, if you're going to go into a STEM field, there may be particular ones that you need to focus on to be ready for a STEM field. There are two options that are still viable for offering in high schools as a fourth option. And that one is an Accuplacer Prep course, and it's specifically for that, but it would not be accepted by the University of Georgia. And the other is Foundations of Algebra. That course was devised to help some very struggling students be ready for Algebra I. That was devised a number of years ago. Actually, in the new standards, all of the standards that, there are only four standards in Foundations of Algebra among the, I don't know, 20 standards or so, that actually helped toward Algebra I, especially in the wisdom, remembering and getting a very good fluent at middle school standards. And so those four standards that it would normally support are being moved into base right now. So Foundations of Algebra can be used for very, very struggling students, but it doesn't support Algebra I anymore. And in fact, you can't give a Foundations of Algebra credit in middle school, but all of the materials are very wonderful resources for struggling students in sixth, seventh, eighth grade. So that's a very important slide in that it shows you all of the fourth options and how they're useful for getting into college and university. And as we move on then, let's talk about acceleration just a minute. Nobody brought their tines over tonight, right? Everybody's going to be happy with me because I'm a good messenger. So here we go. There's a couple of guiding questions. This has long been a point of conversation around the state. Why do we accelerate students? And, and when I talk about accelerating students in mathematics, we're doing a year and a half of mathematics in one year. Or if you're on semester block at a high school, you're doing a course and a half in ninety days. Now, that leads to a number of questions. Why are we doing that? Is faster better for our most able students? Wouldn't we want our most able students to go deeper? And so you can see there on the right side of the slide, all of the advanced level courses or accelerated courses we have that are offered in the state. And that decision actually begins at the end of the fifth grade. So that's, that's a lot of pressure on a rising sixth grader and their folks to be ready for all of that. And so as we progress to the next slide, here is really a very good quote. How do we help the dynamic tension between the time needed to build conceptual understanding alongside decades of research about the harmful outcomes associated with tracking? And the continued public perception that students must take higher level math as early as possible in order to be competitive while applying to universities? And I hope you are offended by the word tracking there, but the, the issue with that accelerated program is, once you're in it, you can come out of it, but it's almost impossible for anybody else to come in if you've not entered into that accelerated program in the sixth grade. So I don't know if it's you, but I turned on to math, and I thought I had some confidence in it. When I was in the 10th grade, I remember sitting in my high school, and Mr. Nelson's Algebra II class, and all of a sudden I saw everything start coming together in my head, that I'm crazy. But anyway, I really had this epiphany moment where, oh, I can do this math, and I can make sense of it. I was the 10th grader. And so I went, I settle math degrees now, so I just want to reassure you that it doesn't have to be in the fifth grade, that somebody could be really find their, their calling in a, or a, a direction is going to take them to a deep state in mathematics. And so with that, there is a shared vision statement, and let's move up a couple of slides forward. You'll see a letter here, and let me give you a moment to read that. So I have it right here in front of me. I'm just going to look at the last couple paragraphs here. It's the position of the Mathematics Advisor Council that works with the Department of Ed and Math Team, that all students should engage in a deep study of on-grade level mathematics through a curriculum centered on contextual learning to make mathematics meaningful and connected to real life. Therefore, following completion of algebra and geometry, there will be an enhanced pre-calculus course that will merge advanced algebra and pre-calculus for college or students to be able to take that as an acceleration, if you will. But it is called an enhancement. The enhanced pathway should be flexible and allow for multiple entry points along a student's high school matriculation. So if we, that, that's, that's the gist of that letter, that we want to give everybody the chance to learn mathematics deeply. And in the next slide, we'll see we're really focused on having ways for students to get on and off that, it's that enhanced version of mathematics as their, to meet their needs. So with that in mind, let's move on to the one that says multiple mathematics pathways to success. And then go on to the next slide, if you will. And again, this one is very small, but there are really two decision points, and that's what Tamara was going to talk about for eighth grade. So what we, what will happen with the new standards that will be written in 23, 24, so this will take place until then, is that in 23, 24, everybody will use sixth grade math. Everybody will be in seventh grade math. It doesn't mean that you can't have some of the professional students that need an even deeper book, and you might have an advanced or an honors course or something like that. But there's a decision point at the end of the seventh grade. It's pretty, I don't know, the easiest ever, ripe, urban mathematics instructional situation. But it's, it's not so difficult to imagine merging eighth grade standards with Algebra I. Many of them, many of the standards in Algebra I are continuation of something for case of points, systems of equations. Eighth grade would be doing that by graphing and by substitution. Algebra I does it by elimination. So if we merge all that, we're not having to do a course and a half. We actually can merge standards together. We actually can merge standards together. And so students have a choice after the seventh grade to go on to eighth grade math or to do an enhanced eighth grade algebra one course, which would then accelerate them in like that word, into being able to do geometry as a ninth grader, which is what we really currently have now. But without them taking a course and a half at any point. And then at, at geometry, everyone would move on to geometry after algebra one. And then there's another decision point then for students to keep going into advanced algebra. And then their fourth course options, which could be pre-calculus or statistical reasoning or a whole bunch of other options. Or it could be an enhanced course of advanced algebra and pre-calculus mashed together. I'm, I'm more concerned about that mashup than anybody. But, but we're not there yet and we'll, we'll see our resources and curriculum map for that as well. When your, when your students run a locked schedule, they have a lot of opportunities to develop in math already. There are already districts in the state of Georgia and in our area that don't offer acceleration at all. They only offer honors level courses. So the state is kind of bridging that gap, if you will. So I wanted you, and we wanted you to be able to think about that overview of where those two decision points are. And that we have eliminated, it will be eliminated, but the decision has to be made at the end of the fifth grade. If you move on a couple more, one more slide forward. There's actually an implementation plan that the state has published because we're not grandfathering anything into high school. In 23, 24, everybody will leave into the new standards. There will be some gaps for that. The states already have identified those gaps. As in some standards, I told you about some standards that were moved into eighth grade now. So the eighth graders in 22, 23 would not have seen those standards when they're out for one teacher in 23, 24, which would have to soon they have. So there's going to be a gap there, for instance. And so states are identifying that and it's going to have some plans in place for us to implement in 23, 24. But this stepped out version talks to you about if they're in an accelerated seventh grade class in 22, 23, what do you do in 23, 24? So they're trying to revise a whole lot of guidance for that. And there'll be lots of decisions for them to make and, and for folks around the state to make that are good for their students. But the revision of these standards really gives us the chance to run these standards. Mathematics standards are, I mean, we're not far enough from Pluto. We're, they're the standards that we've been teaching largely before. And gratefully, as I've been leading what's called a deep dive with different grade groups for middle school and high school, there's a side relief at the end of the day. Oh, sixth grade math is really still sixth grade math. We just moved things around. It, it really is, is an option for us to think not so heavily about the fact that we're moving to some new standards or revising these standards to be good for our students. Now, what do you think of this question?
I have a question. When you were saying about when the, the math breaks out into those four, you know, to the four categories that they could take, where it separates. You mentioned that you don't know about private schools or schools out of the state? Whether those are curriculum, you know, in the state of Georgia that they're approved, but you didn't know if colleges?
No, we don't. This is just the university system of Georgia.
Okay, so how do we make sure that those students get what they need if they want to go? So that we don't pigeonhole them only to Georgia colleges?
You're already, you're already making those good decisions with those students. And that's what your counseling offices do all the time. And then their managers are helping them with their own personal goals. And so if they're headed to a school out of state, they're already going to be looking at which courses should you be taking? A number of right words, your options are accepted by other states, by other schools out of state. And I, I could not swear to this, but most private colleges or universities would even be a little more, give a little more allowance than our university system of Georgia does for those math courses. Georgia's kind of leading the way, if you will, in that we have four mathists, maths to be able to graduate. And that there's a real strict policy about those fourth options have to be beyond algebra two in continuous. We used to have a financial, math finance course. But it was not accepted by the university system of Georgia. But it will be, is being revamped now to be called Advanced Financial Algebra because it will have functions in it that are beyond the algebra two. So not to say students don't need financial math as, as a problem. They will be enhanced even more for them. That's a very good question to ask. Your high school counselors are very well equipped to help students in their personal goals for where they're headed.
Because sometimes they don't know, because I know my kids all looked, you know, outside of the state of Georgia as well, especially if they're athletes. They're not necessarily going to go in state. They're going to look at all, you know, where recruiters are pulling them. And of course, thankfully, mine have academics. But again, they need to have the right courses. Fortunately, they didn't have that problem with this didn't match up because Georgia.
I'd be surprised if, if Georgia's pretty got, pretty high standards compared to most states for graduation and for those four options. And that all those four options are beyond algebra two. But you're right, it, it does depend on individual.
Yeah, I just, I mean, because I know as a parent, now that my kids are grown and we've gone back college and walked many a campus with all four of them. I just know sometimes they don't know and don't make that decision till the end. So parents that haven't gone through it yet, I want to make sure that, you know, sometimes they don't know till that senior year where they're going. So you can't make those decisions ahead of time.
Absolutely. It's the goal of the state though. If these are acceptable by the university system, it's pretty standardized that that would be accepted by other schools out of state. Now, you know, Georgia Tech has some of the oddities about getting there and even with math credits and so on and so forth. So, you know, you're right, here, it's an individual decision. But, but there are so many options that are so well accepted everywhere.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
We've got a challenge, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Casey.
Righty, Ms. Beggs, anything?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got some old business. Policy revision, DJED bids and quotations. Superintendent recommends removing the policy, DJED bids and quotations from public review and approve in said policy. Ricky, Concerned John? You good with it? New business. Twenty-first century grant.
Okay. Tonight, I want to share with you the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant. Superintendent recognizes available, the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center awards are twenty-two, one, twenty-two. So it's two hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars awarded to the American Health System. The massive partnership of the highest health club of Wyngar. Not the nearest grant supports the after-school program of the boards and health club. We serve five of our own middle schools. That's Highline, Old Tibet, Kennedy, Stena, and Lyman. So actually, the program has goals and objectives in place with the intent to supplement learning activities. But challenges, we don't want it to be like school after school. And so we offer enrichment activities, gardening, cooking, psychology, sewing, spin, in addition to reading math, science instruction, that's not revised, certified teachers. And we're actually in the fifth year of the I D S grants. Because of last year, I wanted to show you guys that actually we did two minutes. So maybe start the video. And I just want to show you to check.
What's the girls' development supervision after school? Supervision and guidance over some friendship, positive role model. As inspiration, as encouragement. What's girls' development just? What's girls' development? Provide activities and programs to help kids develop academic success, develop good character, learning of different lifestyles. Of course, the after school program is two burning available, different sports and activities that play together.
Are, we do cooking, gardening. We do like homework and then we do science. We do like tryouters there.
They're involved in basically everything.
We have certified teachers, a pair of professionals, caring adults and teachers that come in and work with them on things that they're having a struggle with when they're in a larger setting. So everything that they need to be successful, they give you.
It's helped them along the grades, along. They're able to come to the boys' girls' club and each be made a part of something special and flourish within their own right.
They help them prepare the younger kids for middle school, the middle school kids for high school and high school kids for, for their future.
We have the expectation for them to do great things. We want them to have a place where they can go and feel welcome, to feel loved.
It feels like a family. It feels like a home away from home.
There was never a word like, there's always a place here for the boys' girls' club.
They have great opportunities, bright hair, fair hair, and if your children to go and learn and be successful.
But if you're looking for somewhere to go for your children, whether it's earth or this place.
Yeah, I like going to the boys' girls' club and I have fun. I come here with excitement.
You can go find.
It's just wonderful here.
I would not be sure I would go back to this.
It's always ever.
I'll show you this. I'll just show you all that to show you what it can do over there. It's awesome. This year's our fifth year left, but so we're ending out this grant cycle with the intent to reapply and maybe add a little support. So I hope I can bring you next year to present an onboard. But do you have any questions, Tony?
I do. Why do we only serve five schools and not more?
So during three, I'm also sound. This one is right here.
Okay.
Stephanie, transportation is also.
It's such a beautiful program. I just wish we could.
Yeah, I'm excited about the chance to expand it to some of our middle schools too. If we get the grant the next time.
We went there recently with Leadership Arrow and it was an awesome experience. And I got to play a mini game of booze ball with some of the kids.
I'm for your support, Dr. Lo. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, videos and site licenses.
Thank you.
Concerned John, everybody good with that? Yes.
Thank you. We all look a lot bigger first of all on that question.
Welcome back.
Well.
So in addition to the primary use as a classroom teacher tool, the classroom cameras for audio enhancements to our secondary purposes as a standard security camera, we were awarded footage cases. These classroom cameras require an additional one-time license to connect to our security camera software. So they weren't applying as this is where they teach inside of it with what we get provided assets. To record it into our security camera system, we need a one-time license for each camera. As we were doing work over the summer in reclaiming some cameras, upgrades to cameras, we ended up with some licenses that were retired and didn't get reclaimed. We were able to cover 462 of the audio enhancements installations with existing licenses without having to purchase additional. But that leaves us with 386 audio enhanced classroom cameras that don't currently have a security camera software license to allow us to record footage in these classrooms. So we've got an RFP for the remaining licenses that we need. Seven measures responded. Lowly respond tech optics that are terms of the RFP. They've got similar business with this before and they're not that listed in the sound of our database. As a point of information, any Panasonic branded camera comes with a license for our security system software because it is also made by Panasonic. And going forward, audio enhancements is using Panasonic cameras in classrooms. So any new additions of audio enhancements, we should not need a license as long as they continue to use a Panasonic camera. So we're not anticipating any additional licenses classes needed. We did buy a few spares just during Oz and Ence's shelter work prepared for. Total financial impact is forty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars from ICS funds. Superintendent recommends awarding purchase of the new insight security camera system licenses to lowly responded tech optics and why no Georgia in that amount.
Questions? Concerned John? Thank you, sir.
I have several items here. The first one is then for a low pod at Bear Parks Sciences. Having him back up for a second. It will reach out to burger then get to this point. It's December of 2020. Order approved rail inspections, construction manager risked a second phase of ASA. June 2021, we guarantee matching prices approved pre-graduated portion of the innovation campus with second phase of ASA. And that GMP also allowed our construction manager to coordinate the support for this installation of a low tide unit, utilities, rate, that sort of thing. And so earlier this month, we received proposals, seven firms, attended a pre-proposal meeting, mandatory proposal meeting, six firms submitted proposal. System operations evaluate those proposals. And that's how we come to the recommendation of asking superintendent recommend mobile, module or solution rather, out of coming Jordan to provide, deliver and install a mobile pod unit at innovation camps. It's a new unit, fifteen classroom unit, over fifteen thousand square feet. In the state of Paul Sumitashin, work project is one and a half million dollars of funding coming from combination care that funding and slots. And that number includes contingency repercussions.
Questions?
What's fifteen thousand square feet divided by 1.5 million?
Pretty good. Again, those are questions.
I was going to say that's, you know, that's a big place.
Yeah. And our expectation is that we'll have that in place this spring. Welcome past the next school year. Those outfitted. Second item is the construction manager renovations, Brandon Kennedy and Arco. We're following our DOE local facility plan here. We have F-23 application approval last month to complete these renovations. The scope of work includes HVAC replacement, two-story additions, the building finish, ceilings, lights, painting floors, as well as bathroom audio visual systems and testing real applications. We've got a mandatory pre-proposal meeting, six firms attended that meeting, three submitted proposals. System operations evaluate those proposals. And we're asking the superintendent recommend charred black construction, service and construction manager risked projects. And stated Paul Sumitashin of three and a half million dollars of these projects stipulated in the RFP. And that's going to be reasonable and cheap by the season. So that's our recommendation, charred black construction.
Questions? Concerned John?
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I have a question about the pod. As far as who outfits up with furniture, is that us or?
Or which?
In the, in the pod, the furniture?
Yes.
They have stuff like that. Does that come with it? Or we'll have to do that later down?
Correct. Next item is construction manager for renovations, modifications. Athletic facilities act so. Athletic facilities, access facilities, managed park property, on local units. BBC, Old Bethel County line, since Academy and C that basically all non-state funded, um, properties that we have. Um, looking for a construction manager to assist us with projects that we completed at those locations. Scope of work hasn't been defined for some of those at this point, uh, but those are our facilities too. And, uh, and we need to take care of this, just talking the other. Um, yeah, this would be, um, renovating the, uh, that facility along highway eight one. Uh, we've got a structure out of the highway fifty-three bar. This is a good structure, but it needs to be rid, you know, things, people of that nature. Now, I've got pod units in there and we just talked about that for the, the basic campus, but this will be associated with any. Any units we might need to put up at another school location, getting a lovely bit replaced or hot. So it's, it's a bit of a catch-all. Um, there again, uh, we have, uh, four firms to attend. A mandatory pre-proposal meeting, three submitted proposals. And, uh, so we're recommending charred black construction, residents superintendent recommend them, uh, to serve as a C M on these projects. With the stated cost limitation of three and a half million dollars. Anything that sees twenty-five thousand dollars, we're about to ask you to give a guarantee of price. Okay, so all that, that's anything personal.
What's I think you start this, the, as it says, a camera or?
Um, the memory.
Could be more specific.
But, you know, that may be one or two things and then maybe three months later, pop on something else. A lot of this, you know, we're going to try to teach about it and complete these types of things. And some of the time, whether in the summer or the winter.
Well, I would hope so. Y'all got enough to say grace over.
Senator John?
Yes. Okay, our final item tonight, um, this is for our studio program. We're asking the superintendent to, uh, set up an intention to utilize line painting solutions, provide facility work for our painting program. Seeking additional painting resources, prevent an allied painting solution, verify their resources. Thank you for us, uh, last three weeks of our schools. Their pricing is aligned with, obviously the same as what, uh, remember Shad, I think, is, uh, discharging later. This is very difficult by now, uh, for us to find and obtain studio employees. And so, uh, we're looking out, uh, for other folks maybe over top of us. And we think that our painting solutions can do that.
So this is an addition to the mirror, right?
Right.
The last time we had a conversation about this, you were having about a thirty percent, um, attrition rate in the studio folks. Has that improved?
No.
Okay.
Senator John? Thank you, Joe. Houston.
Eight, um, superintendent, superintendent recommends the board deciding how in one-time retention supplement for our staff and contract custodial. Um, to pay in January twenty twenty-two, and that costs to be determined by you all. Um, and the applicable, applicable funds will have a budget adjustment for the announcement. The employees and contracts custodians will be eligible for the settlement if they have been employed by system. Or contracted with our custodial contractors lengthy calendar day days as of January third, twenty twenty-two. And it's also the active employees or custodial contractors on the day of the check. This is a retention supplement. Employees or custodial staff that are current employees or current custodial contractors that have not filled the nine calendar day rule. Or receive their funds once they have completed the nine days. Uh, special rules will apply to those on F N L A or work for some, and percentages will be applied to less than the full time employees. So we're looking at a five hundred dollar one-time settlement, a thousand and fifteen hundred. Uh, the five hundred dollar settlement will cost us one million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand and forty-seven dollars. The one thousand will cost two million, two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. And the fifteen hundred dollars settlement will cost three million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. This will be paid for, um, out of, uh, various funds that we're trying to get to pay under the CARES Act funds. And then whatever doesn't get paid under there will be paid under the general fund. So it's up to you guys to determine, uh, what, or what you have to call this supplement. You would like to give our staff.
And when do we need to determine that by?
Um, it would be by next week.
The border meeting, border meeting on the night.
She said next week.
Actually, we got your next week.
Do we have any idea how much we think CARES Act will pay?
Um, I'm trying to get the whole thing in the CARES Act, but, um, I, I, the worst case would be one point five hundred. CARES Act will be able to pay. Best case would be whatever you decided about that one.
We'll come up with a process, get you that number by.
Say that again, Jennifer, worst case, one point five?
Um, worst case, CARES Act will only have one point five. So if you wanted to three point three, you pay five, the rest will be seven hundred.
Got it. Thank you, man.
We're, we're very excited to be able to bring this to you because everyone knows how hard every staff knows you're working. So it's just a really trying time and it's, it's a great way to, to reach out and tell them how much we appreciate.
It's great.
Might be a way to attract some. Be sure, we'll pay a lot of attention to those.
So are we looking at this as a one-time thing just this year? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, so this would be a one-time thing and then during the budget process, we can talk about.
Whether we see this going on. Okay, so in a worst case scenario, if I'm doing rough numbers here, we're looking at six point six million minus one and a half. Who cares? So we'd still need to come up with five point five?
No.
Three point three five.
Three point three, that would be worst case or absolute best case for our employees.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's a budget item, so it's gotta be there. Okay, three point three is worst case. I might need to take that out.
Okay, um, Senator Janet, we'll come up with a number between now and Tuesday. We'll put up Senator Janet at the number when we come up. Is that good? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Michael.
I'm actually gonna go up to the podium and hope I can raise.
All right, same name is. All right, you all read some recs. Bring this board, but first a bit of clarification. Um, we're going to put this under, um. The new business, because it is new business, uh, we want to clarify that this doesn't necessarily look like a board. Really does fall under day-to-day administration, of your approval. Bring that in, for you all to take a look at, um, I think that they look for, it's not higher compared to COVID or masks or anything else. Probably not being up before higher than that. Unfortunately, it's something we still have and we still have some guidelines to talk about. This piece is about, so again, this clarification that this falls under the day-to-day research of the school system. Superintendent responsibility, you have the matrix, so we're looking for that. You know, we started this year with very high hopes that we wouldn't have to do much COVID. And dealing with these type of things, masks, quarantines, all the new four letter words that we've all been to, uh, love to hear about. Um, then unfortunately, we saw this major spike, but we have to, that's our school. It quickly changed a few things and. A lot of times with issues where we try to, I've said this before, it's a lot like that. Part of these courses will be negative. And quickly, really, my problem, very quickly. So here we have a guideline is, uh, right now is the current plan from the board. I understand it's gonna be a bit of some back channel kind of chatter and some things going on that I don't necessarily include it in. That's fine. Um, but we, we need to be transparent with the board, of course, and our employees. We all do have a discussion here, um, in front of everyone and also want to pick second, second, it's hurting me while going through all this. As a spy kid, I mean, personally, I've done a very job with, um, giving this out. You know, public forum so much as I'm just very focused on seeing it to our ministers and managing. Practical members, so I apologize for that, not having to have to go over it. Um, so again, clarification is really is something that needs word over our heads. Um, we want to be very clear on that. Um, I have places to carry in order to bring up discussion for, for, no more confusion for, for. Um, plan right now is a list of center policy, okay, G C C and G A N A, that's right. Regulation is very cruel. However, I think it would be good, and there are policies changed that you all would like to see or perhaps need to put on. As the working system is about, um, so I think this is the time we have those discussions. And I would ask, well, I think it would be a good idea, but. That there are some changes, substantial changes, um, that probably the board is all willing to, well, that was, we're clear. For what we need to, uh, to do to, um, make it, uh, as well as we prove that that happens. Our hours to, uh, incorporate the little board and what we do right there. Your, um, you know, the statute, the piece said, the board, um, this is an agreement for policy, board policy, D A. The board, our superintendent, developed administrative regulations in report policy. The board serves to write and review administrative rules in its discretion. Should revise or read those subrules, or implement the board's executive system with adopted policies. Administrative rules cannot be reviewed by the board in advanced editions, set in text or strong community attitudes. Or possible students have reaction, maybe advisable with the regulation that the board has approved, and it's probably falls under that category. Um, the board itself should formulate a document, administrative rules, own, say, law, say, or policies, or say, change, desire that to do so. Pull that out, um, we do have some, we have more, we have some, yes, for mandatory for here and, uh, get this back now. This room has been guiding, helping me guide decisions at all the lives since I started March twenty twenty. Well, over three hundred years worth, yeah, three hundred years worth of experience, and I'm not thinking about that back then. Um, and, and, you know, most of them run things in the system for quite a while, so they are also here to ask some questions. They have. So, um, do you want to pull up those policies that we were, just, I'm sure everyone. That's a frame of reference there, uh, see those a thing. We do have infectious disease policies, we actually do, board policy J E C C infectious diseases, board policy G A N A. Infectious diseases, um, they're basically the same policy. J C, the J E C C is for students, the B A N A is for personnel. Just word that read exactly the same, but, um, infectious disease was an ill-too infectious agent, toxic products. Directly indirect to the person, um, infectious person. All right, under that, there was on the same superintendent or his enable development procedure related to the impact infectious diseases on school system management operations. Such that they were consistent with requirements of what education rules are. One, two, three, four, um, pieces under that that maybe may not be available for us. Provision for employees, for information, education, training, infectious diseases, that's been all done. Based on, this is our policy, based on guidelines, recommendations, centers of decent control of prevention. Would use personal protective equipment as appropriate to sad, as in exposure. Two, the identification of person or a person's minor, parent, guardian, the appropriate medical evaluation. Whether it is reasonable suspicion that employers do this infection disease. Three, follow school nurse, our committee, representatives, healthcare professionals. And school system administrators operating decisions concerning employer, student, investigation, disease, and four. Disclosure of a federal radio information, that's made by saying federal law, policy, board policy, D A N A. And it's, so, wanted you all to have those. So, but going forward, like I said, I think there are some, uh. Other wants and opinions and definitely want to honor those if everyone would still. Try something, if this is not sufficient, this, I'm very confident for the things that are together. We, if we were in a voting situation, it would be my recommendation. So, as I said, folks are here, they've done the due diligence and have advised me.
Dr. Matt, so it seems to me that this, um, this plan represents a comprehensive amount of input from stakeholders. Not just in the school system, but healthcare providers, uh, surveys have been done. So is there anything else? That you could have done to, to make this a better, a better plan?
Honestly, there are, um, we had more time, we had all the support, terms of surveys and, and poking more people and those type of things, but. As with everything, we look to, I mean, our main function is get kids in school, keep them in school and educate. To recycle, anything else regarding that at all. Um, but we also, as I've often said, our number one priority is keeping the state healthy in order to do that. So, um, yeah, uh, there's always more we can do. Um, we're not health professionals and we pretend to be health professionals. More to do, yes, there are health professionals that are on the team. Um, but I feel like we've reached out, we act, I've heard of both the governor's office, state and local epidemiologists. Folks in hospitals around. It's Matt America, everyone knows I'm Jericho Matt, there's, um, take a point on talking to a lot of schools also. We've talked, I have talked since the start of the district, so, or Risa, throughout the state, the state department. Um, I forgot, we, we at least land under, so.
To this point, I'm sorry, I don't know this. To, to this point, how, how many of our schools have risen above this level three?
We had one, yeah, I think it's, yeah, but, um, yeah.
You're talking about the two point one percent?
Yeah, yeah, how many over?
A bit of the orange.
Uh, yeah, which would be about two point one, ba- based on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so and, and what would now be considered level three, that two point one three percent? We, um, we had a few weeks when things were really bad, that we should have two or three schools at any given time that might be above that level. Um, when it was really the peak of things, we had one or two of our smaller schools that were, they had been above three percent, not prepared on the operation. Many, and it was, it was in the time period in the latter part of August, when things were really, really bad. A few of those were spread out. Most of our, um, all of our schools have been below one percent. Now, obviously, we've had schools in that one point one, two percent range, um, and, and there's been several ranges that we've seen within, um, within that range. But we've not had, um, many occasions where things were two point one or higher.
Thank you. Thank you.
My concern is, yes, all these people have done a lot of work on it, but board members have done that too. We talk about the chain of command all the time, we're very, one, one of the exit interview from Cognia. Made a point of saying that our board knows the lane that we stay in, and we do. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we don't ask that many questions, and we go exactly by what your staff and everybody says. But we are always telling our constituents, here's the chain of command, we want you to do it. We answer to the parents and the students first and foremost, and I'm always saying. We are here for the students to do what's right for the students, not just as elected officials, but everybody. All your team that you've asked to come here, all these people, we should be doing what's right for the students. And that's the only reason I ran twenty something years ago, and when I was called to ask to do it again. That's the only reason I did it, because I love my community and I want to do what's right, period, nothing else, nothing else. So, when I get parents to call me and I tell them to go through the chain of command, and they take it up to the top, and they don't get the results. There comes a point, as a board member, you've got to get back involved, and that's what this is. This board, there's been many people on this board that have been trying for over a month to get this to be discussed, and get it brought to the table. Now, we got an email from you saying that you wanted us to vote on this today, to look over this, and now you're coming up here tonight saying, oh, well, that need board approval. I don't understand why this has had to get into a push me, pull me situation. It's about doing what's right for the people that we are supposed to represent. So I myself, when I got the stuff from you, and there was confusion on whether we could do, because we were try, we were supposed to discuss it at the first of our October meeting. You had told me that you would pull it, there's an email, I sent it to you, and you said, if that's what the board wants, and there was several emails, Vincent wanted to discuss it. Stephanie had wanted to discuss it, Lynn wanted to discuss it, Jordan wanted to discuss it, there was more than a quarter of us that wanted it put on there. You said, if that's what the board wants, it'll be on there, I won't have a long time to get it to you, but I can have my staff pull it on Monday, and then we get an email from you at three forty-five before the meeting? We've got to work together as a team.
So you go about the October?
That, that, our first meeting in October.
That was a, you know, I counted, that was four.
Right.
Okay, I had asked a week, or correct, there were reading, they could be added, you know, prior, I got a note back.
I told you on that Thursday before we went to fall break, and you said, I can pull something when we get back from fall break. I sent an email, it's in written format. So it was a Thursday before we left for fall break, and you said, I, I won't have a lot, but I can do it. And I, you said, I can, when we get back on Monday, we'll be alive, I said, that's fine, because I knew Jordan had talked and had a slide presentation that he'd shared.
I think she referred to the email that, I think I responded, the one that I responded to and said. That I could no longer support mask mandates or the quarantining of asymptomatic children, whatever that was. I don't know what she replied to you, I just think that's what she's talking about.
Yes, it was that original email. Well, the reason was, because that email went out at three forty-five, the day of the board meeting.
Who made the decision not to do it?
You, Jordan tried to talk to you, because I said, let's give him the common courtesy, because Jordan called me on the Monday before our meeting on Tuesday. He said, it's not on the, it's not on the meeting. Let me get, no, I got it right now. Let's see, when was our, I mean. So it was on the fourth, October the fourth, because our regular meeting was on the fifth. So it was Monday the fourth.
Four, it's all right.
Okay, so it would have been the following, so it's Monday the eleventh, some meeting was on the twelfth, so Jordan called me and said, it's not on the agenda. Because the twelfth was our meeting, he said, it's not on the agenda, I said, well, I talked to the superintendent Thursday before, which would have been. The thirtieth, September thirtieth. I said, I sent him the email and said, hey, you know, we need to put this on there, it's not gonna go away. You know, we need to discuss this, and you said, I can have something, I can tell my staff to pull it on, on Monday, and we can have it on there by Tuesday. So then when Jordan called me on Monday before, and he said, it's not on there, I said, that's fine. I said, well, I can make a motion, and I'll, and he says, okay, I'll second it, so then when I came up on Tuesday. Stephanie came to me and said, it's not on there, I said, we know, and she goes, well, I'll make a motion second, I said. Well, out of common courtesy, I don't want to catch him flat footed, let's go discuss it with him. So Jordan walks out, and we walk through the thing, he catches you, at that point. So then, then it didn't get on there, because I had checked my email seven times that day.
Right, so you're talking about, yeah.
As of then, we were trying to get it on there, and then there was a confusion, and we both looked at that thing, I said, if you're seeing it. Obviously, you're seeing something that says order, and what we looked at from your email, and I deciphered it, and I said, well, this is confusing, confusing. Let me get back, so you and I are on the same page with that, it's very confusing, so I said, well, let's dump it back to the governor's lap, because this is confusing for school districts. If he's wanting us to follow this, so I texted it right to him, I called him, said, I'm sending you something, there's a confusion. I texted it right to, and put it right in his lap, and said, we need clarification for our district, if you're wanting us to enforce it.
Right, and that was, as I recall, I'm sure.
Right, after that minute.
The issue of having two masks, and we're.
And whether they had to be quarantined, or whether it was an in-person quarantine, so we got, there's so much work that goes on to make sure we're doing. We all went through, through all that, there was so much to do, so it's not that we're not appreciating everything, because it was so, it was so confusing. Because that, that August the second letter from the Department of Public Health.
That this, this state started to.
Right, and I did, and, and I think what the problem was, is when we saw the, the level three, we thought, well, that doesn't even need to be put on there. Because we don't know, I mean, we think if it gets to that level again, we're gonna have state-wide quarantine anyhow. But, the reason that it came down, that we said, we probably need at this point now, a policy instead of a procedure or protocol. Is because some consistency, that's what it came down to, because parents are complaining, nobody knows from day to day with these procedures and stuff, and what's going on. We've got some schools that are follows, following your procedures, and we've got other schools that are not. We've got some administrators that are following it, that parents are saying, depending on what classroom they go in, some teachers are doing different things. So these kids don't know what to expect, that's why we need consistency. And in a procedure or a policy, the only thing the board has any authority over is a policy, that's why we felt, there needs to be a policy now. That's why it came to this.
Actually, for higher, and, these are the first acts, I did get, first act of official, I'm, I've heard of board policy, but, if so, I did, did have a little bit of. So then we pull up the, we can definitely, we're, that's, board has every right to, should, your charge of policy. Make sure policies, policies are developed, or, no, excuse me, we're gonna say, board policy D, D, policy development. Want to have a few things there, and, go down that road, board is all. Working with that, I just want to have summarized, you got policies already, we have policies, that's what we run by, right? Party that, you have policy D, D, which directs superintendent development administrative regulations and board policies. You also can check it down in the next, we have policy J, C, C, G, A, N, A, direct superintendent, or designate. Development implement procedures related to the impact of infectious diseases on school system operations. Further review and looking into that, that's what we are presenting here tonight, that's the implementation, implementation procedure. Bring you all more input, absolutely. Now, policy is a little different, Matt, if you can throw that up.
Which one?
It's on the, the sheet that I gave you. Scroll down, it's the issue of policy. Okay, board policy D, D, policy development, the board represents the people, the community, absolute. It's a government body which determines all questions of policy they employ in the conduct of our policies. Policies regarding the system policy may originate via certain sources, parent, taxpayer, employee, or the organization. A student, student organization, a member of the board, superintendent, consultant, civic group, or other concerned individuals. In all cases, proposed or amended policies should be submitted to rights and attendants and to the board. And when requested, it will be stated or actioned out by the commission, either director, intermediary, in further, in further regards and sources. Superintendent is authorized and directed to establish and maintain such an administrative machinery, and to ensure that the operation. By all interested parties receiving recognition of superintendent, board, or regarding proposed policy or policy amendment. Following full review by the superintendent, the board policies should be brought in for consideration of superintendent recommendation. Concerned with proposed policy action, the non-adoption procedures. Except for policy actions in an emergency situation or on emergency measures. The adoption of board policies shall follow the sequence of the take place, two regular or special meetings. One, announcement, distribution, pergrating, proposal, or revised policies, as I'm mentioning, of the recommendations superintendent for adoption, provision, or rejection. Opportunity for concerned groups of individual or individuals to react to policy proposals, superintendent certification. Discussion, final action on board on policy proposals, final vote for adoption or not for adoption, that plus the meeting, all the meetings, which policy proposals are placed on agenda. Policies and amendments of policy shall be effective immediately upon adoption, unless specific criteria, date, and providing of adoption, adopt for solution. There is, they establish for emergency procedures, matters of unusual urgency, the board by majority vote. The board may wait for two meetings, negotiations, and immediate action to adopt or revise policies. Such immediate actions necessary, superintendent may take a statement of emergency. So, yeah, absolutely, the board has a version of our policies, that's what I'm, I'm hoping to do, is follow the policies, and all that. I feel like that's what we've been doing, I think we're all going to, go into the, about to do one process of putting in a policy. When you want to, very, very, staff and I went that after, there, well.
Dr. McMichael, first of all, thank you so much for listening to our concerns. There's not been, this has been such a hard time for you guys. I know, I know, and, and I know that many of the emergency group is behind me. And I thank you guys so much for your time and what you do, I know it's hard. I know that you can't please everybody, and I know that it's a thankless position, and so, I thank you for that. You know, I, we can only, as administrators, as board members, you know, we can only make decisions based on information and data that we have at that time. You know, during, when COVID first came, you know, I made hard decisions and voted in ways that. To be quite honest with you, made my constituents angry at me, in a lot of ways, right? Because I had to vote in a way that I knew, or I felt would keep people safe, no matter what. Whether I believed the numbers, whether I just had to vote based on the data that was given to me at that time, right? But as time has evolved, and data has evolved, and thank God, vaccines have come available. You know, I feel like the situation at hand has changed, and so therefore, my opinion has changed. And now, I feel, you know, I feel obligated to agree with what I do believe is the majority of. You know, my constituents, and that is in parent choice. And this, this plan that you guys have set forth, I, I think it's a great plan, I, I don't think it's a, an awful plan. I too have spent a lot of time studying plans of counties and cities around us, because it's really all you can do, you know? I have spent a lot of time specifically on Walton County, Oconee County, and Jefferson. I sort of zoned in on Walton County, just because demographically, they're kind of the most like us, I feel like. Oconee County has a much higher vaccination rate than we do, and Jefferson is just smaller, and, and just different. So Walton was sort of a little more apples to apples, if you will, compared to the other two. So, you know, I did a lot of research on their plan, their plan was very heavy, parent choice, and, you know, and, and I liked it. And I did talk it over with some of my teammates, you know, because that's what we do, you know? Obviously, we don't talk to each other in groups of a quorum, because that's against the law. But we do talk to each other in small, you know, individual, and, and, you know, bounce ideas off of each other as we can, and. You know, try to get an idea for the pulse of the community, because we all, I really believe, I love my team. Whether we disagree, agree, I think we all really do want the same thing, and that is, we want to represent our people. And I think y'all are part of that team, when I say that, I mean, I include you guys as well, because we're all a team. But with that said, all that said, you know, I did, you know, an email. You know, I emailed the chairman, and I was just very, you know, I wanted to be very clear and concise with my concerns. I do not mind sharing those concerns with the board and with the public. And my main areas of concern with this current plan are, you know, I'd like to see the masking of, and quarantine options start after a one percent. Positive cases reported, not before, the current plan starts at zero to one percent, I feel like less than one percent is a very, very small number. Once again, talking about Walton County, this is something that they're implementing, and it seems to be working for them. What's, you know, I, I feel like, you know, reinventing the wheel, if you see it's something that's working, you know, why reinvent the wheel? Another thing, I think it's very important for us to allow our parents to be in the buildings as much as possible. You know, we, as a school system, have tried so hard in so many ways to get parents in, in our buildings. You know, I know as a parent, I've been to tons of meetings, and, you know, just all kinds of things, to, to be there and, and be present. And, and I, I want to see that again. I do not like the mention of a future automatic mask mandate threshold. I think that that should be a board decision going forward, and I don't necessarily mean a, a complete board decision. I just mean a joint team effort decision, something that we all work together on, if that does happen again. There must be another mask mandate, or that is, you know, something that comes up. I did not, I was not in favor of there being mention of digital learning in the plan at all. I believe that that puts parents on alert, that's just not necessary. Once again, we are at a very different place in our society, with vaccines being available for children over twelve. According to the news, they're going to be available for children over five very soon, thank God, so I, I just don't think that's necessary. And then lastly, I, you know, I just would like to see the plan be a little more simplified. Hate to keep saying Walton County, but once again, that's just something I zoned in on in studying. It was a very simplified plan, and all this, like, if you're within three feet, this rule applies, if we're at this percent. If you're within six feet, this rule applies, if you're within this, this percent. It just seems like a lot of, a lot of confusion, a lot of, for lack of better terms, junk for administrators to manage. You know, and I, I just, I don't, I don't particularly, I would like to not see that, you know, I don't see that in some of the other counties' plans. And then lastly, you know, I don't say any of this, because I am not a believer in the severity of COVID. Anybody who follows me personally knows that I am a big supporter of vaccines. But I'm also a big supporter of personal choice, and I believe in person, in parent choice. You know, I think it's our responsibility. Um, you know, I think it's our responsibility to keep ourselves and our, and our children safe. Um, and I'm very thankful that now those options are available for us to be able to do that. But I still think as a school system, that we should post everywhere that we can possibly post, that we strongly recommend masks, we strongly recommend vaccinations, we strongly recommend it. We just keep pushing that information, we make it available, we make masks free for anybody who walks in our building, but we just give them the choices to whether they put them on or not and that's all. But I, I deeply appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you.
Anybody else wants anything? Because I will, nobody else does.
The only thing I did want to add on her saying about three feet, six feet, because looking through that Department of Public Health and talking to them, calling, talking to them, I think that is where that came, that came from, if I'm not mistaken. They, they do, they do say that. So that is where that came from, both those documents. They didn't, they didn't really, they didn't really contradict each other on any of those. So I have no problem with that. I have no problem with, with that at all.
I think the Department of Public Health, um, understands that it's impossible to mandate anything. And I'll give you an example, this is a nine-member board, this is like herding cats sometimes, till we sit down and talk like. Feral cats. We have, Ben, this is a low number, we've got about 15,000 students, give or take 100. We've got 1,900 employees, that's 16,000, 900 people, um, in our system. And it is impossible for us to effectively, um, mandate masks because if you've just got that many people and you've got, uh, taxpayers and parents, um, who have legitimate reasons for their children not wearing a mask and who have legitimate reasons for their children wearing a mask. And so it's our job to figure out how we can do what we can do in the best way possible right now. Well. Yes, yes, we are. And that's why I think that, and, and when we say masks are strongly recommended, we mean they're recommended and people should hopefully have their children wear them or not, but it's up to the parent. We're in the business of education and it's a public school. We're not here to dictate to parents what they can or cannot do. And, and some people may get mad when I say this and they may take one side or the other and say, well, I'll pull my child out of public schools. I will tell you, you do have that option. There are private schools and there are, there's, um, online schools that you can enroll your children in. But we've got to look after the 1,900 or so students and employees that we have. And we've got to be consistent and there's no way to be consistent with 19,000 people. There just is not. So, I, I, I honestly think we need to say that masks are highly recommended, not mandated. And, and I'm concerned about these numbers, if we had 1% of our students, um, testing positive, that would be roughly 169 kids. If we had 2%, it would be 338 and if 3%, it'd be 507. That's still a small percentage of the 1,900 folks that we deal with every day. And so. So, but that's why I'm saying just district-wide, that with those numbers. So what we're saying is if we have 1% in a school with 900 kids, that's nine kids. Okay? Um, we're, we're, we're trying to make sure that, that we do things in the best way possible, but when you're having nine cases affect 900 kids or 12 cases affect 1,700 kids, what do we do to make sure that we are ensuring that the majority of those kids who are not sick, may not have any symptoms or may have been exposed but aren't going to get this, are going to still be in the classroom learning because that's where they need to be. Well, so what I'm saying about.
Was that we are able to use modified means, no matter if the two are matched or not. I think what I hear is civic ones that they're still, when they're there reporting, but it's a bag. Doesn't mean they're not positive, because there is a bag, meaning they're matched to protect the others. Wearing a mask is not about protecting yourself, it's about protecting those around you. I think we may have lost the sight of that. Not just, I'm not saying it's more about society. That's not the purpose of the masks. The purpose of masks is to even or know you're infected or don't know you're infected. Our data shows that last year, there were infected, there was positive student and potential to pick out about 14. We did find out in a total degree of Walton, we started basically in line with Walton, sorry to be. Almost all of us in the recent, 13 people in the system. But then despite that, we realized kids were infected, they were infected, it's just, it's just a demo area, it's just, we don't hate it. And we were getting these, we looked at same notes that also has on the website that shows. I thought that was our colleagues in Walton, I ain't remember the name. Not, not missing them and what works with them is great. We talked, it was 554 to barely. Um, they do have actually very high, higher death rates in Maryland, people compared. But, um, but that's all of us. Back when we were in fall, so we definitely take that into effect, we're looking at that. Um, we just feel like, real quick, and to be careful, when the others were talking, again, this is a different thing. And that pointed out very, very specifically from, uh, to, and say, if you know this, after the August second, which, um, Waltons does not reference, that these are the ways that you can do the in-house warning. I'm sure all that, I'm probably higher seated. Um, that doesn't mean, you know, we're great, not, not follow that, absolutely. Um, but it wasn't able to get that information, just to piece up on that and incorporate that in. Nobody hates a mask, they wear it, they get it from that mom, that mom's somehow reading. Ms. Ramon just said, you know, she voted the way that it did, her lobby decisions, that were probably in the way that anybody support a parent choice advocate in the out of this, in the city. You have high schools, it's parent close high school, no way else around. We have programs that are parent choice, I'm not all about parent choice, but I have to be all about. And that's where the things will.
Dr. McMichael, I think our. I think our schools are probably the very safest places our kids can be. They always are, always have been. Right, and this is no exception. Our folks have done a remarkable job. Um, even with staffing issues and keeping our buildings clean and safe for children. Um, but at the end of the day, these buildings do actually belong to the parents and students and the taxpayers. And parents need to be able to talk with their teachers face to face, they need to be able to contact their principals face to face. Um, because a lot gets lost in a phone call or, or an email, yes, yes.
It really supported our book fair last week in this.
So were you letting them in the buildings?
Okay, well, that is awesome, good.
That's interesting, because Jordan wasn't even allowed to drop off a company.
So what is the essential wording on level one maintenance for visitors? Are, is visitor someone other than a parent?
Well, I think what we're saying is just, yeah, I mean, they are, they are, sorry, they're injured, they're.
Let's talk about buses while we're on.
Before she says that, let me make.
I just decided to cave on that one.
I'm here, I'm here about how students, it makes the, e- even if they don't have a mask or if they have a mask on, how we know it can spread. I think this needs to, we need to look at this because in the beginning, it hit us all cold. We never knew what this was, we didn't know, is it political, is it not? Well, now we, most of us, there's a lot of us, not me, thank God, I don't think, but a lot, a lot of us have had COVID. A lot of us know somebody that's very close to us that have died and it made a big impact on us. Um, but at the same time, I think, you know, look how much the flu does damage to our schools and kids and all that. And we know now more about COVID, we know that there's now a vaccine out there that people can get. Um, we don't make kids wear masks with the flu and the flu definitely, and those kids can definitely take that back because I've gotten it from my grandkids. I used to get everything that my kids brought home, I call it, the stomach, everything. So I think we need to be aware that that is a situation, but we, but the state and the, and the country didn't do a big thing. We didn't hear commercials about the flu and how many people, and we didn't track, we didn't have to contract trace sets. If we did, we may be really shocked in what we could do to probably keep that down in our schools. So we need to, I mean, I think there's been a huge fear factor that's put out there. But, yeah, I mean, seriously, that, that, they take that back to somebody that's elderly or that lives with them and it's immune compromised. I have asthma, I'm gonna catch everything that they give me and go into major bronchitis and have to, to do that. So we need to be aware of that also.
One of the other issues to address here, we can, we can look at COVID, we can look at A and B. I think bronchitis, RSD, um, that I think, in my opinion, is more symptom related than disease related. You're exactly right. By wearing masks last year, the CDC, Department of Health did not track influenza cases as bravely as my opinions show. But as we all know, we think about transmission, direct transmission, one-on-one, droplet, moisture, airborne moisture. Why do surgeons wear masks when they perform surgery? It's not from responding to the patient, it's what the doctor may have to the patient. So by looking at the mask and in this type of plan, I was not focusing on specifically COVID. Has been reported that potentially this could be a really bad flu season. A lot of times because individuals are not necessarily convinced to get a COVID vaccination as well as an influenza vaccination. So with that, we're seeing individuals not getting a flu vaccine as much as they have in the past. So in the other data stops spoken to, that even less spoken to, they're talking about by worrying, but we're looking at potential building is not just mitigating the procedure for COVID. We're also looking for the mitigating the respiratory infection that can we get during this time. So again, the effect is still with the directive by Dr. McMichael, is to keep kids in school and having them parent choice.
I don't know how we ever functioned for 2,000 years plus without masks. I'm, I'm being facetious when I say that.
As somebody that has the breathing issues, and as somebody that has, I've had asthma since I was five and I get severe bronchitis. My son, my last one, would quit breathing and turned blue on us. And so, uh, do you want to talk about somebody that really stayed on top of that and was, would worry? So I, I think of those things, but again, it was up to me to keep my son safe and me to keep myself safe. It's not up to the rest of the public to keep me safe, it's up to me to keep me safe. To go get my vaccine, I got my COVID vaccine, I get my flu vaccine, even though my chiropractor told me not to. You don't give your computer a virus to stay safe. Well, guess what? I was in the hospital one time and there was no more room at the end and they kick you out when they, you get, you know, take your antibiotics at home, well, my stomach couldn't handle any more antibiotics, I had to have them on the, so I don't want to go through that ever again.
Unfortunately, my role for the past 17 years in the wine and beer high school and part to that, I've seen the rest patient, um, I've been in that, uh, panic mode where you have a sense of doom for that, just the patient, so I can, I can advise directly from them. And with all due respect, that's also my fear. Um, on the sideline, most of you know what I've done in the past and some of the things we've had to do, um, have been nothing but focused on to, and that's kind of directed.
Ricky, um, Jordan, Lisa, anything you guys want to add?
I don't know that we really got an answer to the question about who are the essential or essential meetings, um, in the schools and it sounded like things have kind of hurt them, maybe just some inconsistency and what's allowed in one school and may not be in another.
So basically, when, when are parents, what's that essential piece? When can they come, when should they not? So that's clear across the.
I, I will say that the parents come into the book, where there is a certain number that can come in, there's an R S V D. Um, so it's not a pre-oral, um, and, and they go straight to the media center, there's a certain number of people there and then in the house. But same, parent conferences, conferences with administrators, we have, um, U G A interns, um, that are in our building, some itinerant therapists, counselors that come in, um, those are some examples.
Are parents allowed to come in and reach the class now? One at a time or anything like that, how often a class, right?
We have copywells coming in and we have sent samples or copies, we have had copies. And we set that on.
Some of the water things are still a little dicey. I'm a lot of that for us. We ask parents, uh, don't hold my parents' speed, during work session, have you all encountered anything that you haven't been allowed in schools in the past two weeks or so?
Checking out my child or what?
I'm sorry.
Checking my child out, I wasn't allowed to go ahead and help them.
What school was that?
Parents turn a lot of buildings around at all.
Thank you for sharing.
I was allowed in, in Brandon the other day, I had a parent teacher conference and I can tell you that it was a refreshing to be able to see the teacher face to face with my child there in the room. She didn't have a mask on, I didn't have a mask on, I felt safe. Well, I could also see her face and her smile, which is really important. And Brandon was also, we did the trunk or treat the other night and the lobby was open. So I guess for me, as a parent, if you're going to do something like that, masks don't prevent. But people were in and out of that school with no mask on and I don't think there's a COVID outbreak since. Right, so I would just, you know how I feel, as a parent, I, I think that I agree with Ms. Lynn and, well, everybody. You know, you guys need to make it, make a decision as a group for all of us in your community. I disagree with some of the things that were said tonight, but again, that's my morality, but you guys got to. But you guys gotta come together for us and for the students. And when I hear you say, when I hear you say that you had a hard time breathing.
I've never, never not said.
Sorry, sorry, that, I think about the children. My son has an asthma. I have a medical exemption for him, so he doesn't have to live with it. I, I understand, but what I'm saying is what about the other parents? What about the other parents that pediatrician wouldn't write a prescription? And they're at school every day. They're, they're wearing a mask. I mean, they're no longer, but we really have to think about it.
Yeah, but I, I, I want, and I agree on, on a lot of what you're saying all the time. However, we were in Ross's mode. It was all within temporary question, correct? Back to what we said. And they like did like different questions. Um, this year, the people that, that we have to listen to. As we use that school, it will be back in, so we can start right now.
That was kind of a pivot.
Communicated.
Yeah.
That, that's an issue for them. But that was, it was never, you know, I, I've been accused of all kinds of things. From starting there. So neither, neither are, uh, probably the, the, or the, the areas, but, um, we're in a society and we have to sometimes do these things. We, we are charged and responsible for. And put it very well, not even a, uh, folks. And we're not medical officers. But my, my, so all we do is save data and what we have and probably, but we said that only working over. Now, the nice thing is that we're a science. But I don't like them, never have. By the way, also, we also in my shadow at school, our neighbors have. At second high school. If I proceed, has been getting to this point? No. My concern and each concern is take that out and it has to improve that. Maybe not, and no, we're not a hundred percent, we'll never be a hundred percent. First of this, first of, first of not a hundred percent. We did the best we can in certain sets of focus and teaching and learning and teaching, asking and informing us at all. We had those discussions with our leadership. But if you get one to thirty percent, at the show, we go. I definitely understand as a parent, as a parent, kids was graduated consistent, so one to seven. We'll be prepared. We're longer than a student. But we have to try to craft this balance. Go all the way, one way or all the way. And that's where, I think where we're at with this, I'd be very surprised, honestly, at this point, we have seven or seven, this is four. Our class is well over. Um, but the thing about that is we don't know, we all said that very, very clear. We don't know, we didn't know last year. We didn't know this man. We know what's been happening to you, whatever, and it seems, it's, we're not getting very data from other sources. Maybe so, that's what we can. We're back to Austin County and not quite a lot of them, but as I say, we just want to start comparing everyone to do. Um, yeah, that they're good right to the populations. I don't know. I'm good at it. So that's. Just looking at this as like, you know, students, these, it's like they did, but we're also taking you to account. Letters to come out after, after a second. We, I mean, best you can, I said, overall, best we, we can have our head for years in schools, that first week we have school. But I was able to go out in schools, see kids smiling, see teachers smiling, work with kids. And then, hey, it's already the same. And if you sit, you know, it's been my interest at work too. We have a couple of nice people, we have a friend right now, so fight. And once to me, I will say that. No matter which, which we are, one child dying under my watch, that's my advice.
I just don't think we can prevent it, unfortunately, and I.
Again, I was just, we're interrogate, wearing masks is not a foul.
Right.
Keeping your jobs, about keeping other. Yeah, they, again, I don't think we're ever.
Right.
I don't want to have a war with you. All do something. That's where I'm going now. The border is great, pull it out, we take, take it out. On our connection, we're very clear on that. But for the whole, please make that decision on your business.
So to try to tie this together based on what everybody's saying. If we put together some clarity on outsider visits, parents, things like that. If we move the percentage from zero to two for the phase one.
I'd be okay from zero to one. Just it starts at one percent. Right now it's zero to one, whereas it would start at one to.
Well, yes, same.
Right, right, yeah.
It's not the same thing. You're saying.
I'm saying.
Nothing from zero to one.
Correct.
Nothing.
Nothing.
What about?
Make a call. No, not nothing, not nothing.
What about the, um, the exposure?
Tracing, yeah, the exposure would still be called. The parents would still be called and told to watch for symptoms. And if, you know, that kind of thing. I think that's what the other counties are doing. So I, I'm never going to be an advocate to do nothing. But, you know, I, I'm just saying that I would think that the mask, you know, and it, because once again, we're talking about in most of our schools, less than eight children. That's just my opinion.
So, so you're, I'm sorry, go ahead. You, you were kind of, it's all right. It's all right. No, no, you're having.
Go ahead.
Can you pull it back up on the screen?
For the clarification, what activates this? Uh, is it, um, is it?
Positive cases.
Is it, this, is this only for COVID nineteen?
Yes, sir.
So what be, so let's say COVID nineteen, as in the flu, as you mentioned, doesn't go away, it's been here since nineteen eighty. So let's say this doesn't ever go away. So.
I think it's something, again, that this is an affluent situation still, and I agree with you on that. Um, I think at some point this will be, um, I would love to see it go away. I think at some point in future, we're not really like that soon. Um, a lot of this, I don't really realize, this is not really a school or a national stuff.
I know.
Um, we're not, we're not training with this. We're not.
And neither are we.
Neither are we. I would say, uh, that's just me. Over the past week. I know it seems to be the, over the day, go out to a void somewhere. But you're probably got the wrong purpose. We're just doing this and they would be direct to that. This is not, I didn't get that, or I didn't use the, giving feedback from advisor, don't pass the patients.
Uh, me too. We all are, we all are, yeah.
This, this notion, we shouldn't even have this discussion. These are like back when we had this one. We had, those is that we could shut them to a level, that had happened. If you get up to local control, I'm all about control. Whoever's for, to present that. But sometimes in moving into society, it's something that applies to your dad and Ash and the record. This year, we shift in the same direction. We may not have, every school system is safe, a lot of people suffer. And importantly, parents are, help reserve are. It's, it's a hot mess. I'm gonna say it's not. There's a fluid hot mess. I don't have an intervention around the force, but.
Well said.
It needs us to be. His policy, his policy, right, to get down, and all that, right, and up. Two months from now, we'll have a policy.
Then it'll be changed again in two weeks.
Well, no, the policy, which is, uh, that was not one of the policies. The policy, policy, letter, letter of approval, policy. Need you all to vote, why I, I, uh, these are all.
Doctor Michael, can I ask you a question about these guidelines? Uh, from the discussion I've heard tonight. These are really, really fluid and as things change, these change. If, you know, we're provided this with a, this COVID goes away, then, uh, these go away. I, and I, I'm not gonna make a political speech, I, I, or any kind of speech. I've talked to people that are on, well, nobody wear a mask, well, everybody wear a mask. And I heard somebody say consistency. I think I've heard that two, three different times. The majority of the people that I talk to, I try to stay away from all and every, and never and ever.
Very wise.
And if I say that, if I say those, I'm, I'm misspeaking. But the majority of the people I talk to say, just tell us what to do and we'll do it. Just come up, come up with a plan. And I'll do that. Now, with, the, I, I got some folks that, you know, on both ends of that really, really loudly. But I've heard it called a silent majority will just, i- if it, if it's in any way making any sense, I'll, I'll be glad to go on.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
That's basically what we did the first year, the second, that's the first point of this year. But we have a lot of push, and we want, uh, you.
Again.
We want, we want you to have it, whether that lays out specifics about how we will do. So based on our experience of what we've learned for the last year and a half and taking input from all the private ways we've gotten it for. Folks coming and speaking before, emails about others, people that, uh, LAX has talked to, guidance from C E C, guidance from public health. Talking with our administrators and principals and others and sergeants of our staff and everything. Then we have put together what, in some ways around still compromise, because as you said, there are folks on both ends of this spectrum. And as Miss Stevens said, we got to take care of all of them. And so this plan was put together to try to provide choice, to try to set some standards whereby we can know as best we can in advance where we might make some decisions for things to shift them to a higher level. Um, you know, the bottom two levels of this, masks are strongly encouraged. We don't get to any kind of mandate until twice the level that we had initially done in the early part of August. Um, we provide choice somehow, person can quarantine. And I won't say something like quarantine. And that is you can quarantine at home or you can quarantine for the length of your quarantine by wearing a mask at school. You have to wear it all, you don't have to wear it for a long length of time. You have to wear it for the time that you should be quarantined. And the point of a quarantine, let me just, let me just be as clear as I can be on quarantine. Well, you have the term asymptomatic quarantine. A quarantine can't be anything but asymptomatic quarantine. There's no such thing as asymptomatic quarantine. If you were symptomatic, you'd be in isolation. Every doctor was asymptomatic quarantine, and that's the point. The point is that if I knew you were sick, I could stay twenty far away from you because you have symptoms and I can't see. I knew I was sick, I stay home because I'm knowing I have symptoms, I stay home. The deal with quarantine is that you can be walking around carrying the virus, capable of spreading the virus to someone else and have no symptoms at all. And that's the point, and that's the reason we want to treat somebody who's had close contact and been exposed and could be a carrier of the virus differently than just everybody else's. And the other thing is, is that not everybody, I mean, they legally have a choice to go to private school or to go homeschool. But not everybody has the ability to do that. So we can get it for a good price. So people have to go working and know the school system or job here. And so they don't have the ability to do homeschool. And so we're trying to strike back. We're trying to find that path down that, that will allow us to do both. Educate students and we need to be classes to do that. And keep them safe and really our whole community to try to do our part in keeping it spread down so that it will eventually hopefully go away. And if it doesn't, I'm sure we will go longer away than I would have been. But COVID has proven to be more deadly than the flu. I know that flu can cause it. But COVID has caused people to have a much higher risk. The problem with COVID is that I could have it and have no symptoms at all and be walking around spreading to other people. But yeah, I have no negative consequences myself. If I'm not suffering, I'm not having any symptoms. Somebody else can get it and they can die. And while we've not had any, is, is not my question, we've not had any serious consequences for students. Yet, other than a couple who are in ICU and struggling, um, we have had parents of our students. And maybe that affects people that don't know that that with, I guarantee you it affects those kids. It affects those kids a lot. The consequence for me is not liability. The consequence for me is in either bed and not knowing that I did wash grease in the washer to protect students and staff who might care. And I honestly believe that the plan is approved. The plan that gives parents a choice would probably might quarantine if they're in close contact. A plan that doesn't require masks until we get to an elevated level, which we've had very few opportunities to get to that level to this point. That balances all that in the best way possible. And that's what we, a large number of people worked on this and given input, have put together the plan that we think is the best plan based on our accumulated experience and all the info that we've had that walks that line between both extremes. And that's what we're trying to do.
Doctor Green, I, I totally hear you. I do. And I, um, so I just have a, so first of all, you know, I do, I take COVID very seriously. You know, I, I did catch COVID from my asymptomatic child and I got it and I was very ill, very, very ill. I had myocarditis. I was extraordinarily ill. Um, I was very much, um, not planning on getting the vaccine to begin with. And now I'm on a commercial for the vaccine. So, you know, I take, I, I take it very seriously. I also personally know a child who lost their mother. The child was friends with my son. Um, so I'm, my boots are on the ground here. Okay, I, I, I do. But I, you know, when I think about everything that you just said, as much as I, it's so hard for me because I agree with you, you know, I do. But in terms of public school, I think about all these children that we're talking about and all these things. And I think, you know, I think about today when I went to Target, right? And I saw people there with masks and I saw people there without masks. I think about a couple of weeks ago when I went to a concert. Nobody had on a mask and I was nearly having a panic attack because I had only had one of my vaccines at that point. And once again, I'm a little gunshot still, you know? So once again, we can, when we do this at school and look, I have no problem with masking the, during the quarantines. Okay, I have no problem with that because once again, I'm not an advocate for doing nothing. Okay? But when, when we talk about, you know, like I said, my, my, my vote to just, you know, start the level one at one percent. I just think that we, we are, these children are not only going to school, you know, they're going other places.
They want me to say that not all of them.
Sure.
Some of them are.
Sure.
Going to other places, going to Target, others are not. But they're required by law. So if I want to protect myself and I'm really concerned that if I were to get that, then I, I cannot go to Target. Or I can pick up, I'm gonna go to groceries at Publix, which I've been doing since the beginning and hope that, that they're pushed away. Um, I can do lots of, I can do lots of things where I don't interact with people. But one thing that I'm required by law to do, assuming I can't afford to go to private school, even then I'm going to the person or do homeschooling is those two. That's why I think it's different because I can choose not to play rec league ball for a year or two. I can choose not to go to some get together that's, that's, that's happening at the park somewhere. I can choose not to go shopping with Target. There's lots of things I can choose not to do that single. There's lots of things I can choose not to do that seem to be most of all. So when I'm the child, and I'm the parent of the child and have to send my child to school, I'm hoping. That the school system and all the other peers may have to do the same thing or willing for us all to do reasonable things. To make sure that all of our kids per se, we can disagree, that's my opinion. And I feel like the team's put together a plan that tries to take into account all of those different sides of things. And that's what we're proposing. And that's, that's my opinion about why it's as important as it is that we have such.
Thank you.
And I understand that, but on this level three, one of the things I saw with a face mask will be required. Indoors following school plans for mask breaks. Okay. My thing on that is, just like Dr. Green just pulled his mask down to talk to us. Every time you pull your mask down like this, then you put it back, you're now contaminating. You just contaminated your mask by doing that. Every time. Uh, but even still, we ask kids to pull their mask after putting it down. Then they're gonna be pulling it back. You're now contaminating, your hands are dirty, you've touched the surface. And I talked to my medical doctor about it, who has his doctorate. I talked to him, it's, it's think of what, at length, very, every time I go to him once a month. Thirty minute conversations, one-on-one with him. And, you know. That just concerns me that we're gonna ask kids to be taking them off, putting them back on, taking, I mean, you're talking five-year-olds. Last year when the mask thing went on over in Paul Carey. My grandson, the first one, he came back home and my doc, he, we said, what happened to your mask? Where's your, that's not the mask. He went, he swapped masks with a kid.
Well, the mask mandate's done.
You know, it's like, come on. So when you're gonna ask them to take them off.
It's over, yeah, that's over.
How many times do I see him on the ground?
I wanna get back to the bus issue.
Yeah, it was an over the top.
Okay. Because I'm hearing from bus drivers that sometimes kids may start out in the mornings wearing a mask. And then they get on the bus in the afternoon, they're not wearing a mask, or vice versa. Or their parents are dropping them off in the mornings and, you know, they're fine. And then when they get on the bus, they don't have a mask. So my concern there is buses in general, because you get a bunch of kids in a closed space like that. And I don't think buses have changed much since I had to ride one, which means that in the summer or in the spring and fall, they're hot. And in the, and in the winter, it can be cold or they can, or there's just, you know, recirculating air going around that's not helping kids. And so I'm concerned about them having to wear masks on the bus because of the buses. Does that make sense?
First of all, the kids on the buses are not managed at all. If they take their mask down in the back of the bus, the poor bus drivers are not.
They're not gonna know.
They're not gonna know. So having the bus ma- mandate really is, is a non-issue because it's not gonna be followed.
It's, um.
Well, then why would we have it?
There are two reasons for something. The main one being that it is actually a federal requirement.
Requirement or guideline?
Requirement.
Requirement. Okay.
No.
Yeah.
We called the CDC. We called the CDC, the CDC said it was just a requirement that they cannot set laws for the government.
Right, I mean, a lot of those are, you know, it was maybe your house or restaurant.
Now, but they said that they cannot, they don't have the authority to make that kind of law for, for school systems as a local.
It's a guideline.
So it's a guideline. It's not a requirement. It's not a requirement.
Law.
It's a guideline.
It's a government requirement on the CDC website. Again, I'm not setting these policies. I'm setting it for the commercials, it's only the sarcastic. However, we saw a conspiracy debate about that. Principals on the TV, that like that's where most of their contact hurts came from. See that because you're not keeping any sort of element to go in that class and do that with kids. I don't think that he should, and we need to start off doing that, um, too recently. Because it's been more than one year. You can't so, this is, right decisions of this is in all of our businesses, not that we're. It's not possible. Again, that, you know, that's something I think we need to debate. I'm not a certificated person. I'm not going to go over to CDC straight up and fire them. Or is that something you all wanna do? It's not.
I'm just not sure it's in the best interest of the children to be wearing a mask on the bus, is what I'm saying.
I don't, don't disagree with them on that. Let's say I have a different opinion, but. Some others, but. We, we're, we are getting these things from all different, we're being hit from all different areas. And yes, we have to make. We have to. Get it perfectly. We have to get those very big, big apples as well. That piece. I know Rosaros is all right. Would you mind if Rosaros?
It seems like it'd be a safety issue to be looking in the mirror, trying to figure out if little Johnny's got his mask on.
Specifically said that it is not the responsibility of the driver to put in that mirror. What a bus driver is on your mask. What we've asked the drivers to do is to make sure the students, as they come on the bus, have a mask and have access to that. And that we ask them to wear that. Can they go to the back of the bus and get a seat and take it off? They can.
Okay.
Because in the beginning, in the beginning, um, August, it was so hot and that windows were all down and the bus was moving and the air was flowing. We felt like that was the best dangerous situation. As we approach wintertime, those windows are closed. Uh, and that air is contained, then we feel like that's probably a situation where. The, the danger of spreading respiratory droplets is, um, higher. I'm not as passionate about that particular item as some of the others, um, are. Because as Mr. Ritter said, there's probably lots of folks that are outside from, out of mind and are not clear of it. So is Miss Stevens' question, if that's going on, you know, what's the point? I don't know, but it is, you know, a lot of what CDC puts out says recommendations.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading, recommendations, recommendations.
Well, my find that is a recommendation. It is at the CDC and one of the very few things that are actually requirements. And as Michael said, not. Tend to do what I'm told. So until you tell me to do something different, I lean towards trying to follow the thought.
I really think we need to look into that as to help pro and cons there. Because if I were a child on a bus in the winter with a mask on. Having to just breathe that recirculated air for an hour or longer, okay? I, I can see other issues, respiratory issues that, that wouldn't have anything to do with COVID that can make a child really, really sick. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. And there's got to be some information out there, uh, about that from somebody.
Have you gone with the rhetoric or what?
Yes, I have. From that perspective. You are correct, there is research to support for, there's research and work begins. Um, it also comes down to what type of mask or face covering the individual might be wearing. Obviously, every epidemiologist would find a way to be in a respiratory type of material. We're not gonna wear that. Um, the next step would be an A ninety-five. Or then going to a three ply mask. This is a three ply mask. Um, so I feel very, I got a lot of concern with this. I feel very comfortable with that. Putting on a neck gaiter, that doesn't provide much protection as best. Um, I've seen kids with a spark around their face. Um, with, with no disrespect to anyone on this, on this board or committee. Running buses all the way back home from a football game right before Thanksgiving. Most of the players have got a blanket wrapped around their face. And they got their faces covered, they're riding a bus while they're sleeping. I don't mean to disregard one way or the other.
It's the reality. It's the reality.
It's the reality. Um, you've probably seen students that are the child of the bus driver and they go along route. A child sitting in front part of the bench, all covered, they're covered, same scenario. I'm not saying one or the other. My biggest concern for that was looking at. The spread of COVID alcohol by looking at closed current airflow. And we already had a result of that in our local, um, retirement home. That had eighty-some odd individuals as positive for their. Uh, my biggest concern is that looking at some type of protection for a student, if they choose to, they wish to put it on with the case maybe. That at least there can be a self-contained small wire with a very limited amount of airflow. With the potential of potential drug transmission.
I'd like to say one last comment in the talk, except for that, I plan to say online, but, um, one other comment about that. We had the mask mandate all of last year. Kids were in buildings for six hours a day. And we saw no evidence that kids were getting any kind of secondary illnesses related to wearing a mask. In other words, no increase in other kinds of respiratory diseases, uh, did we notice because of our own mask today. So as we think about our data, there was nothing last year when we're known to mask mandate all year long. That would suggest that masks will make the kids sick.
That you know. That you know.
Dr. Green.
That you know. You have to take that into consideration.
Absolutely. And the thing I would say about that is we see kids in our clinic all the time. So prior to pandemic, we've seen kids in the clinic for various kinds of illnesses. So you're exactly right, that we know of, but we know of a lot of illnesses that kids have because we sent them to the clinic. We have enough to prepare. We've cleared a lot of, lots of different illnesses that kids have. You're right. I don't, I don't present that as being a complete poll. But it would nothing to suggest that the wearing of masks increased respiratory diseases in students.
Thank you.
Folks, the key in here is to come up with a plan. Either come up with our own plan or to come up with. A version of Dr. McMichael's. Or to move on and do nothing and come, and, and come back. I think we owe it to our taxpayers to come up with something tonight. And we keep beating dead horses and going back around in circles.
Bill, what I've heard a number of times is the word compromise. Um, I mean, here's, there is no win.
No, no one's gonna be happy.
There is no win. I mean, our, our professionals have, they have pulled from every available resource. To put together a plan that is a compromise that even includes, uh, suggestions from members of the board. And so, um. If, if it has clarity, uh, it's comprehensive. It's a compromise. And, and I like the part about it that it, it offers a, an incentive. You know, we haven't talked about the incentive piece. There's an incentive built into this plan. If you get vaccinated. If you wear a mask, then you don't, you don't have to comply with, with some of these mandates or, or requirements. And so this encourages kids and parents to, to take advantage of the vaccination, to. To exercise the option to wear the mask because, you know, we, we talked about Walton earlier. And we, and I heard O'Conne mention, well, every county that touches Barrow has a higher vaccination rate than Barrow. And so we've got to figure out how to incentivize people to start getting vaccinated. And to exercise the option to wear a mask. So I think this is a great plan. And it would be really hard for me as a board member to vote against something that so many caring, um, professionals and parents. And educators have put together with the kids at the, at the heart of the plan.
At this point in time, if you look at the mitigation procedures that have been utilized. Prior to the vaccine, it was the standard quarantine that we're following right now. Sixty, some amount of your home for, at one time it was fourteen days. Then the CDC evolved. And with no disrespect to anyone, I had this conversation with everything, a lot of just sports men's, an NFL medical director. Um, that looks at this. This pandemic is an evolving, dynamic, changing situation. So with the discussions that we've had, we felt that with the present mitigation procedures, that there are some issues with it. Obviously, mask mandate. But if we go back to the old quarantine, if you recall, we had a significant number of students that were not in the classroom. So please do understand, it's a new job. All last year, I was not taught to teach on your digital. Teaching healthcare is very difficult at times. So I'm empathetic to teachers that are there.
Yeah.
And with all due respect, Mr. Mr. Max and I, we went back and forth on a lot of, of issues as far as trying to teach everything else that would go on. Very sensitive for that. So I understand that I have to not having students. Some kids in, some kids out, half the class there, half the class left there, half the class on virtual, and so forth and so forth. If we go back to the old quarantine, then we had that method. The other method came out was after the CDC said we could modify quarantine. Which then they said we can go down to three to six if they're vaccinated or both parties are in masks or showing. That's not being a joke. If Mr. Billy comes to school, he's wearing a mask. And I'm within three feet of him, and I'm on a probable or a positive concurrent case. He's masked. Different. Unless he becomes symptomatic. So we're looking at symptoms from that perspective. If Mr. Bailey, and that's the learning names, Ms. Brandon, that's Lynn, you're vaccinated. I'm symptomatic, you get to stay at school. So we're not removing that component of that. So, and with all due respect, Mr. London, the word compromise to me is a negative term. I'm not trying to compromise anything on this. I'm looking at what, how can you have an evolving plan that's dynamic with the evolving pandemic. That gives parents a choice. That does proper mitigation, is prevent the spread of infectious disease. And to meet your approval. As a teacher, I want my kids in the classroom. I want my kids on the athletic event. I want my kids at conferences. I want parents in the room. But until we get a hold of that from a holistic scale. We have to have some type of plan with it. Sir, you're correct. I hope and pray every day that somehow or another it evolves and is gone. Um, but remember, it's not COVID, it's SARS, so the respiratory syndrome. Is probably a coronavirus. This one.
Um, is there any, with all this, I think we all know that mental health has become a severe problem. Um, not only was it a crisis before COVID existed. Um, but what it has driven people to sheer panic in our society today. What is being offered for students? I know there was a virtual suicide awareness thing. I can speak personally from a daughter who feels a bit of a severe anxiety. Um, and issues as far as now even being mocked for not wearing masks at school. Um, and various bullying. What has been placed on resources for students who are dealing with that? Um, anything different than what existed before COVID?
Is there anybody on the team, a health professional? Not, not anything with respiratory, not, because as a fifteen-year law enforcement professional. Who handles unattended deaths is the ones that y'all don't see. This, the risk of a student, the student age, teenage suicide rate in Antwerp and the secondary discounting in the state of Florida. Is higher than you've ever seen. And taking away a kid's identity and covering and facing is a serious risk. And by without, how, without consulting with a mental health professional, just putting out a text message. That everybody's saying care about teenage suicide is not the same as actually consulting with somebody next to you. Specific teenage suicide, that's an attempt to try to make that happen. I have not spoken directly with a mental health professional. Um, I have spoken to primary care health, family care providers, P C Ps, uh, other spokesmen. We, we, we do have professionals in our school system. Every school has counselors, at least one, sometimes two, sometimes four. Um, we have, uh, Dr. Love, who came to present her career on the after-school program. She coordinates the work of our school counselors, our school social workers, school psychologists. Um, they've been, they've been well aware of mental health issues, uh, since the beginning of that. And constantly been educating themselves on how to best support students in these very difficult times. We know that certainly there's lots of things that create additional stress for students. You mentioned loss of identity, uh, loss of parents, loss of, um, uh, you know, just a normal way of, uh, life. There's lots of things that do, you're getting sick, there's lots of things across the spectrum that affect our students. And so our teen counselors and social workers and psychologists have been constantly educating themselves. We work in partnership with outside, uh, therapy, um, providers. Who can come in and provide therapeutic services to our students. So we are. So we are working very hard specifically on the increasing mental health concerns that are existing, existing because of the pandemic in our world, these days.
And so he takes a great point, plus a very, probably a whole other meeting if it was. Um, but Barrow actually has always pretty much been a leader in that, we, we have started a suicide task force before COVID. Um, because we're very concerned about what we've seen in the school with that. Uh, we also started to host an annual mental health professionals, um, from all over the state, com- congress right here in Barrow County, we've been at it several years now. Um, so that has been a, well, before COVID, that's a little big push for us. And America, you're on Barrow County, and, uh, you know, if you're in Barrow County, that has had a lot of that going on, it was the most we ever hear about it, mainly adults, so we also have quite a, quite a, that, that's a huge concern for us outside of COVID and, and sure, COVID and the vice versa. I'll have to, uh, root at the vice versa, we've seen lack of those in school systems, lack of those from parenting, therapy and, and these type of things, it's not helping at all. Um, so it's something we need to communicate and comment, absolutely, and school system's dangerous to be held for that also.
We also have, um, the prior fire chief, John Skinner, he is our chief security officer, which is something that a lot of, of school systems don't have. We have him here and he obviously brings a lot of insight, you know, being somebody who is the chief of EMS and all that good stuff. So we take that really seriously. I wanna go back to the word you used that, that I wanna make sure we address and that's bullying. Are you saying that your child was bullied for not wearing a mask? And what did the school system do about it?
Um, my daughter, she just brought it to me the other day, I have a daughter at the school, I've spoken, um, with her principal of various issues before, he's amazing, I don't have any issues with him, I have no problems communicating with him. Um, and my daughter just said a, a unique case, she feels, um, excluded and left out, part of that's sort of why, part of it is is her being a teenage girl, because we know how that goes, um, but she does.
There's no excuse for bullying by anybody in our school system.
And, and we're getting that from her, getting information from some of us, as she says, I don't wanna be a snitch. And so getting names or comments or locations of where things are said, um, it's not like she's just a, a a fountain of information, um, for me to, to bring to you guys or to talk to her principal about.
I've been to her one, yes, I've had, I've had three girls.
Yeah, so I mean, hold on a minute, as soon as I know, I will communicate with the principal, who I said, like I said, is over at the normal. Um, but yes, it, she, she does say that it is happening.
You might wanna talk with the school social worker about that because sometimes while children won't talk to their parents, they will maybe sometimes talk with the, with the social workers who are sort of trained and get past that. I just suggest that to you.
We have, we have others. None anymore than software. We do, we do better. If we're, we're not.
Okay, we've got administrators, we've got cabinet members that have been here working since probably seven o'clock this morning. So I think we owe them the, uh, opportunity to, to go home and enjoy the rest of their evening.
And really, we'll, again, right now, we're, we're gonna go ahead and plan is we'll consider this, bullies are a no first, but we'll do one, two, and quite quickly here, we talk around quite a. There are very specific pieces after all this discussion, you all want, and you need some kind of, I guess, I don't wanna be, we. Claire, about what we need to add notes, I'm gonna be sure, what members have heard.
Clarity on the visitors, I know it's, it's a real hot, there's no reason George shouldn't be allowed in, in, in his.
I would suggest.
No insurance.
Yeah, 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 let's keep going up there. I would suggest that you go over the notes that you've taken tonight, which I know are bogus. And then, um, we meet as a group after we've had time to review everything that's been said here tonight and, and make sure that we're comfortable with what you're doing. I, and I, I don't want in any way for anybody to leave this room, I hope that you all know who are employed by the school system, that I think you are true heroes in every sense of the word. You have done a phenomenal job, nobody should be asked to do what you have been asked to do for the last year and a half, and that includes our superintendent, yeah.
This is, this is our staff, if you're familiar with us, and we base it on teachers and. Was, uh, made to say, quit my first internship a few years ago. Uh, probably two things, and one of them I'll always remember, the right from the act, the problem after the last. And the other one was people go into education because they love it.
That's true.
And, and that's very true, and we've been able to quote that, uh, in space and those were some simple oppositions we knew that when we, when we signed on the dotted line. But our teachers, our historians, our chef members, our post-arrives, all of us, those folks are out of certificate, they're red, they did not sign this.
Yeah, they didn't.
They have heroes, absolute super heroes, um, administrators, channels, and all that. You, you know, you sign that for other units that were signed. But the, um, but they have, this, this is incredible, and everybody here, it's such a good thing. And that's all about with the family. If we all have interviews to say, our job is to try to find that something, and then I don't know, we're talking about our staff, we, we have, um, we have deeper staff, help me, you know, one of the things I've heard, I didn't like, you know, very much, that's red bar. Um, the last thing I ever did, and I, I focus that, before, I, I, I do have people in the script, you know, in our school. And actually, we only did that one time in, really one and a half days, um, but we did start, I mean, I should, I mean, what people expect. I do think it's very, in fact, I mean, the staff out there, they'll say, we can't, we can't actually, well, it's very consistent. I was looking at our parents, yeah, that, that's an outside possibility. Um, it would be the absolute last resort in this camp. And so far as you're, uh, uh, Bishop, it's a hack show. Yeah. So, that piece I want, I mean, if it's on there or not, I feel certain, if it stays on there, I think there are, that realization stays on there. Some form of this, it could happen, it's the outside chance. That's the difference, that. Well, that's really what I love this. And if we give you four versus four, three, or four, five, we'll definitely have that discussion. Maybe this is that one, we, we may get changed there, and I hate to say that, this is trial and error. I'm repurposed with one about it, I want, I'm, I follow them all up, rules, I don't know what to follow. You know, purposefully, hundred times, they complain, say. We have not been able to do that before, and so take a rest, I pray.
That being said.
Fifty places, almost everyone else.
Ninety percent of all problems can be solved with open communication.
Absolutely.
So I hope that going forward, we can, I know it is, and I hope that we can all, uh, and when I say all, I mean the entire community, come together to understand that we're doing the best we can with what we've got and that doesn't mean that we can't change or that we won't change based on, um, the fluid situation.
Yes.
For sure.
I applaud that.
Well, I'll say this, based on the fact that, you know, I've been very vocal about my concerns from the beginning, um, when Dr. McMichael first sent out the thing, you know, I was, I was the first one to say, I can't support it anymore. You know, listening to them, you know, I'm, I, I try always to be fair and compromise. For me, I still think that the, um, the, the percentages are just, they, they're a little too low, they need to move up. But I'm certainly, you know, willing to compromise and to accept, you know. I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, I, I do think that the, the percentages are too low.
That's our, um, it's not a big picture. No matter what we're on, we're still very, very.
Indeed.
And I, and I wanna say, and I think it's important because, you know, being here and there's a lot of people that have never been in politics before and are finding out. You and I know, I mean, it's not, it's not personal, it's not, there's, there's a personal side that we all have and you and I've got a first, but then when it comes to the business, it's business.
Absolutely.
And, and I can keep that separate, you know, some people paint, but it's, it is a business thing and it's, you know, and and sometimes it's not easy and it's, and sometimes you've got the the dirty jobs, you know, there used to be a TV show and it had all the dirty jobs, sometimes you got, and you don't like it.
A few of you here that is a little more around higher.
That's right, indeed.
Bringing myself a point, and that's how I did it, but I think that's, I hope society is, if, if, right, and remember that. If you're not pleasant, there's not anybody, this is where we're wanting to.
Well, you said something at the beginning that you don't hear people say a lot right now, you took ownership. When you communicated this and you took ownership of that. If we had more people to just take ownership and say, I'm sorry, maybe I made a mistake, we could, we could take some of the care out of these issues.
For sure, for sure.
Absolutely, make a mistake. Yeah, exactly, but, but yeah, we definitely do, we did a lot better, and honestly, of course, I think we did.
Just as a, just as a point for me for clarity, we're just gonna keep doing what we're doing, we're gonna table this, is that what I'm hearing?
I would prefer since this is a little more, less stringent than what we're doing right now, um, good administrators. Um, if we were to put it out and say, let's go ahead and start doing this, and we won't have that due to size of parents and community and everything else, but. I think I would be more comfortable if we go ahead right now and start for a fuller professional. For money now, if, when we get some changes, those type of things, then we'll put that in, we, it goes down awesome. Yeah, I, we are, we, our fallback position was probably. Just so we get the kids back to school.
Well, I think the parents are only gonna be upset because it's more strict, not less strict. Yeah, the parent, if we get, if we get less, they're not gonna get upset, it's when we get more that they get upset.
Again, y'all take no action, this is what.
I'm just asking if you look at what we talked about tonight.
See what we can do.
I don't think we're asking for too terribly much.
All right, we're gonna move into executive session.
Oh, Lord.
Body appointment, appointment compensation, hiring, displan action, or dismissal, periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the positions of superintendents. Ricky?
Ricky, so yes.
So yes, I'm good.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.